Good evening, everyone. Welcome to May 12th City Council Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the State Open Meeting Law, consistent with the Governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this in any future meeting will be by roll call. So if you are calling in on a telephone, you can press *9 to request to speak. And if you are watching on a computer or device, there was a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. So please, under either of these options during oral communications, to be recognized. That being said, Madam Clerk, can we have the first order of business, please?
First order of business is oral communications.
Alrighty, let's see how this goes tonight. So under oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regular scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. The person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Alright, so we have a one person willing to speak. Hold on one second, Barry. Alright, so state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Craig Hamilton. I reside at 46 Grove Street.
Thank you, Craig. Go ahead.
My concerns, first off, I'd like to thank the city, especially Mike Hale and Bill Gillis and Jamie O'Hara about the prompt response yesterday for the raw sewage running down Grove Street from a sewer manhole with the existing, you know, condition we have here with sewer problem on the second phase of our end here. And there's a lot of people out now with the coronavirus walking around the neighborhood, especially with little kids, people walking their dogs such as me, my mother, and there was a lot of raw sewage running down yesterday. So it was a prompt, quick response from the city of Gloucester to get up and take care of that problem before people started getting... I started letting the neighbors know that there was raw sewage running down the street. It's been an ongoing issue for a couple of years now, anyway. I know there's a second phase scheduled to be started around here, and it kind of needs to step it up a little bit. The other question I have and the concerns I have is the road conditions here and the sidewalk conditions. They're horrendous, they're so depleted and compromised, and they've been for many, many years now. And I'm hearing now about patchwork being done, and we've been here at 46 Grove Street for 49 years now. We've never had new sidewalks, we've never had a new road here. It's a main access road, there's 18 railers that come down this road, there's boats on trailers coming down this road, there's school buses, there's a school bus stop on this road. And the road condition to the sidewalk especially is really horrendous. I talked to many of my neighbors, and they really would love to call in, but they just don't know how because they're elderly. They're very insecure. One of them.
Okay, great, Craig. Thank you very much. We'll get your response out as soon as possible.
I thank you so much.
Alright, we appreciate it, pal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stay safe, everyone.
You too, pal. Thank you. Is there anybody else for oral communications? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is a presentation from Martin Pillsbury, MAPC Environmental Director. We got in the 2020 Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you. Martin, are you here? How you doing, Martin? Would you like... You're on mute.
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. I'm here to give a brief overview of the city's natural hazards mitigation, which has been completed and approved provisionally by FEMA. And I do have, I'm not sure if this will work, if you like, I have a very brief set of PowerPoint slides that could be used if you would like me to try that. I don't know what your protocols are for this sort of thing.
Yeah, sure. You'd like to try them out, go for it.
Okay, I'm going to try to do the screen share. If this doesn't work, I'll give you a description without it. Let me give this a try.
Alright.
It says host has disabled, so somebody there will have to enable me to do this. Whoever controls it.
Joanne, can we allow him to share his screen? And Joe, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say this is being presented on behalf of, you know, the Planning Committee, which consisted of Mike Hale, Mark Cole, Greg Catamatory, Jill Cahill, Cal McMahon, myself, along with David Quinn from the Police Department. It's a fluid document, can be amended if needed pending FEMA approval. It's been a long time in the making. Like Martin said, it's been approved by FEMA. We need to get this approved, you know, pretty quickly. It has to do with grant funding and stuff like that. So it's pretty similar to the existing plans that we've had, but it's been updated based on, you know, the flooding and things that happened in 2018 and the blizzards and things like that. So Martin was the architect behind the plan, so we'll let him do the explaining, and we'll be around for questions after.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Martin, you should be able to share.
Is that good?
Nothing yet.
Here we go.
Nothing.
Are you seeing anything? I have a... Share my screen up.
I don't see it. Does anybody else see it? No.
Yeah.
No, you're not. Okay, well, wait a sec.
So if you want to try to describe it a little bit as you're trying to share your screen, that'd be helpful, too.
Yeah, I will... I'll flip the slides because it doesn't seem to be working. So, yeah, this is a plan that actually updates the existing plan the city already had in place. It's under the Federal Emergency Management Act. It's an agency, it's a plan to help community mitigate natural hazards. And... One second here, I've lost everything, sorry. Trying to share my screen. Are we still?
You got a little bit of something going on. It says you're trying, or it says you have shared your screen, but I don't have anything up.
It looks like it's thinking. Maybe it's uploading?
Is it coming up?
Oh, it's up.
Are you seeing?
We got it.
There you go.
Yep. So here's the first question. Why is the city doing this plan? This is part of a federal, a national program under the Disaster Mitigation Act passed back in 2000. And federal government is encouraging every city and town to adopt this kind of a plan to help you prepare for natural hazards before they occur. So this is not an emergency response plan, you already have those kinds of plans in place. This is the other side of the coin, is what can you do before disaster happens to be better prepared and to mitigate the degree of damage that would be caused? And one of the most important take homes is that the way FEMA has structured this program is that you are not required to have this kind of a plan, it's not a mandate, but if you have a plan that's approved by FEMA, it makes the city eligible for FEMA grants to go do actual mitigation projects on the ground. And there are some pretty significant grants that you can get from FEMA through this program. Trying to find where I can advance this line. Sorry, hold on a second. Yes, so this is a plan that covers all categories of natural hazards in the city, and it is by the same token, it is not a plan to deal with other kinds of hazards. You have other plans to do that. So it does not include things like man-made hazards, chemical spills. The city has other plans to deal with that, mostly what's called your SIMP, Emergency Management Plan, which is in place already. So this plan complements those other plans, and it has a specific focus on natural hazards. FEMA and the state agency, MIMA, the Mass Emergency Management Agency, have sort of gone through and created a state-level plan that lays out what all the hazards are, and this is a list you see here that summarizes them, that each of the town and city local plans needs to address. And of course, flooding, and especially for our coastal community, is the primary impact in most cases, but so are high winds, hurricanes, nor'easters, and winter storms, we get those, you have impacts from those. Things that are less likely to happen but could happen, like earthquakes, are considered within the plan. Stream temperatures, brush fires, and droughts. So even events that are less frequent, but if they can happen, they will be addressed in the plan. What is hazard mitigation? The idea of hazard mitigation before disaster occurs to take the actions you can to permanently reduce or prevent loss of life. So it's this emphasis on preventative action. Often, these are called pre-disaster mitigation measures, and the grant program FEMA runs under this is actually called the Pre-Disaster Grant Program. And we ask these questions, you see in yellow at the bottom. What preventative actions are being taken now? What have you already been doing? And the city's doing a lot. We've been dealing with many of these hazards for years. But the plan allows you to say what additional actions could be taken to make the city more resilient and less vulnerable. And those are the focus of the plan, is to come up with those kinds of actions. As was mentioned earlier, this all began with the city's hazard mitigation team, which has representatives of all the major departments and commissions and boards. And then MAPC was brought in by the city through a FEMA grant to provide technical assistance to essentially write the plan for you, but with the guidance and the input of the hazard mitigation team from the city. Throughout the process, there is public input, and there were two public meetings that were held through the process of drafting this plan over the last several months. And now that we have a draft plan put together, we submitted it to MIMA and FEMA, they reviewed it, and FEMA has come back with saying that the plan meets their requirements, they are ready to approve the plan, and they issue what they call approval pending adoption, meaning there's just one administrative step left before you get the actual approval, and that is for the plan to be adopted by the city. And that's by simple vote of passing a resolution, which is what is before you tonight, to adopt the plan. FEMA wants to make sure that the plan is not something just that the best minds and planners and public works folks in emergency matters come up with, but that the actual governing body of a community is aware of the plan and puts their adoption onto that plan. And once that's done, and the vote of adoption is taken, the final plan will be resubmitted to FEMA, and they will then issue a letter of approval, which will be good for a five-year period. These plans have a five-year approval process. During the next five years, once that's done, the city will be eligible for FEMA grants. And some of those grants can really help to fund local mitigation projects, drainage projects, and coastal damage, and all of that sort of thing. Let me just mention a few things that are in the plan. It's, you know, there's a lot of data in there, and we only have a few minutes, so this is just going to be a very high-level review. But one of the main things we do is we actually map out what are the hazard areas in the community, and with the input of the local knowledge of the local team, come up with specific areas that are subject to issues such as flooding. You see some specific areas listed here, and I know you can't see it at the scale, but they're all on the map. Different areas that have been known historically to have flooding, and it's important to note that although FEMA has federal floodplain mappings, there are many areas that have drainage issues and localized flooding that aren't on those federal maps. And these are the kind of things that this local plan drills down into that kind of local knowledge in detail and brings it up. Other hazards could also be mapped, such as areas that may be subject to wildfires and brush fires, some of the forested and open space areas. So those are also shown and mapped in the plan. Other hazards that the plan does address are some that may not occur quite as frequently but are still something the city needs to be thinking about, and especially with climate change, some of these things may happen more frequently in the future than they have historically. We look at extreme heat, we look at drought, and we know that, you know, drought isn't something that occurs frequently, but there was a pretty significant one fairly recently in the year 2016. We look at extreme, the other side of the coin from drought, extreme precipitation, and this little graphic shows that there's a pattern towards more extreme precipitation that's even more intense in the northeastern U.S., in our region as a whole than it is in other parts of the country. And we look at earthquake. Earthquake potential is relatively low in Cape Ann and Gloucester compared to, say, the Midwest and California and other places, but it's not zero. We've had some small earthquakes over time. And historically, if you really want to go back to colonial era, there was a pretty large earthquake in the 1700s off of the coast of Cape Ann that they said at the time was severe enough that people's china plates rattled off the shelves in Beacon Hill in Boston in the colonial era. So earthquakes are something, because they don't happen frequently, we don't often think about them, but you also do want to be aware that they are a hazard that we're subject to. I'm moving ahead now to go right to some of the samples of some of the mitigation strategies that the team and MAPC came up with in the plan, measures, summarizing here, some of the measures that can be taken in the future to help the city be more resilient to some of these hazards. And they're broken down into categories, flooding, a couple of items specific, flooding a number of items, so that's your most common problem, brush fires, extreme heat, et cetera. So these are some of the measures. They're explained in more detail within the plan, and then for each of these measures in the plan, they're prioritized, they're given a cost estimate, and a general timeframe over the next five years. So that is really a high-level review of the plan. The final steps here, as I'm showing you, are to the plan, we're at the yellow here on this final few steps. Draft plan has already been reviewed by MIMA, the first item. FEMA has already reviewed it and approved the plan. We're at the point for City Council to consider the resolution to adopt it. Once that's happened, then FEMA will issue the final plan approval, and as I said, that approval will be good for five years, during which point the city will be eligible for FEMA grants. And that, I hope I haven't taken too much of your time. That gives an overview, and I'm certainly glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Alright, awesome, Martin. Thank you very much. Do we have any councillor questions? Consular Gilman, one second though. Martin, can you stop sharing your screen so we can go back to, unless anybody wants the screen up, questions on the screen?
Okay. Let me just try. Alright. There's a button to stop share. I've only, I haven't done this before, sorry. I just found it.
Very good. Consular Gilman?
So I have a question for Martin and the team, and it's kind of a technical question about the initial meeting that we had perhaps two years ago, I think it was in June, when we did, we broke up, broke out into focus groups, and we went back and came up with our priorities. And I remember that one of our societal goals, the second most, the one with the most votes was the second to most votes, I think zoning was the first, and then the second was emergency preparedness. So I was wondering if you could just describe where that falls into this mitigation plan, because it seems like what you're emphasizing is that this is not the emergency plan at all, but rather kind of the plan that discusses how we can prevent these things from happening in the future. So that meeting kind of resonated with me, because I've been looking at that as kind of the baseline for us to be addressing this, but yet, from what you have just explained, and you did a great job explaining it very succinctly, it seems like we're really not talking about the emergency preparedness portion of this. So I guess that's to Martin or anybody that's on the team.
I'm glad to answer if no one else wants to share that. First of all, thank you very much for reminding us about that meeting two years ago, because some very important things came out of that. I will say that this can be a little confusing sometimes. That was part of the city's municipal vulnerability preparedness climate change project, and I was actually at that meeting, that's why I remember it, which is actually a different project than this disaster mitigation plan. This plan has come over later. But basically, the reason why you don't see the emergency preparedness quite so much in here, although there are a few items in there that relate to it, to go back to that list of items, but it's not the main focus of this plan. That is your comprehensive emergency management plan, CEMP for the acronym, SIMP, which is really the, like so many things, there's kind of a place for everything, and everything in its place, and those kinds of issues go in that kind of a plan for the most part. With a few exceptions, I do think that the recommendations in this hazard mitigation plan, there were a few items in there that would help with the emergency preparedness. I think there were some radio communication improvements and a few of that sort. But again, that's not, that isn't supposed to be the main focus of this particular plan. But on the other hand, you're quite right, we don't want, the city doesn't want to lose track of those issues that were raised at that MVP workshop, and so it would serve well to keep those in mind and see that those are brought forward the next time your comprehensive emergency management plan does any kind of an update, which I'm not sure, we don't work directly with that plan, so I'm not sure where you are with that. But that's kind of where I would suggest that those kind of items should be dealt with.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Alright. Consular O'Hara, I saw you had your hand up earlier. Do you still have a question?
Yes. I just want to thank Martin for his presentation, and just have a question for Assistant Chief Joe Aello. I just want to ask Joe, I want to thank his men and women, as well as the men and women at the Police Department, and more importantly, of Mike Hale and his team. In a time of emergency, the city services are so important to protect the people, citizens of Gloucester. How will this interact with just overall storm readiness?
Thanks for the total support as far as public safety goes. You're right, we're all trying to do our best in these times. But like Martin says, this is a prevention plan, and this will help us to get grants. Mike has a lot of projects in the works that are going to need to be funded, and this is going to play a big part in that. And this is more of a prevention aspect of it, to prevent. We've seen, like he was saying, we've seen disasters, and they're changing daily. I mean, what we had in 2018 was things we haven't seen before. So this plan does address those, and we hope to move forward with, by funding, by approving this plan will allow us to apply for the grants to get those projects completed. I'm not really sure that answers your question, but you can phrase it a different...
No, that's great. The acknowledgement that we're working every day to improve this current situation as the environment changes to protect our citizen tax pay. Again, I appreciate efforts, and I'm sure all council colleagues do as well, the city departments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more councillor questions? Consular Cox?
Yep. I just turned off my video. Hold on. Sorry. Are we voting on this tonight? I see it on for council vote, but it would be the first time we've got it on the agenda, not the second time, right?
Consular Cox, it was on the last city council agenda for council vote.
Yeah.
Okay. Steve, I'm not exactly sure what we're voting on other than to move something forward, but, I mean, there were no slides given to us, we don't have a copy of the hazard mitigation plan. I support it, but we, the last email that I have is back in December, so I'm just curious.
We do have a copy, if you'll pardon me, Mr. President.
Consular Homer?
There is a copy of this plan in the updated agenda. It was sent to us. I know that there have been a lot of emails coming forth, but there is a plan, it's in the packet.
Oh, good God.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any more councillor questions? Consular McCarthy?
Just, I did read through all 100 pages of it today, and having lived through it back in 2018 and before, it seems to encompass all, if not all, most if not all, of the problems, and I thought it was well-written and well-researched.
Thank you, councillor. Any more councillor questions? I am going to ask to take things out of order and bump this up from the bottom of the agenda so we can have a council vote. I'm going to take a roll call, we're going to do a roll call for everything, so without objection, I'm going to start the roll call. It starts with myself, so councillor...
Do we need a motion?
Do we move the motion?
Well, why don't we take, I got this. So why don't we take a vote to take things out of order first, before we do a motion? So this is the vote to take things out of order, because...
So moved?
No.
Second.
Consular LeBlanc, yes. Consular McCarthy?
Yes.
Consular Memhard?
Yes.
Consular Nolan?
Yes.
Consular O'Hara?
Yes.
Consular Pat?
Yes.
Consular Cox?
Yes.
Consular Gilman?
Yes.
Consular Holmgren?
Yes.
Alright, so we're going to take things out of order, so we're going to bump this up, and I will entertain a motion to accept the 2020 Hazard Mitigation Plan as written.
So moved?
Second.
They moved it second, and does everybody understand? Are there any other questions? Alright, I'll call the roll. Consular LeBlanc, yes. Consular McCarthy?
Yes.
Consular Memhard?
Yes.
Consular Nolan?
Yes.
Yes.
Consular O'Hara?
Yes.
Consular Pat?
Yes.
Consular Cox?
Yes.
Consular Gilman?
Yes.
And Consular Holmgren?
Yes.
The motion to accept the 2020 Hazard Mitigation Plan passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, councillors, and thank you, team, for getting this together for us and presenting it this evening. I'm sure we'll do great things with this in the future, and I know 2018 was a things we've never seen before, and so was in 2020, so hopefully we can push all these things that we haven't seen behind us and move forward with, hopefully, good things in the future. Alright, great. Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, can I have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is the confirmation of new appointments.
Thank you. So I'm just going to start right off with the motions, and ordinance administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appoint Timothy Wood to the EDIC, term to expire 7/1/23, and I so moved.
Second.
Tim, are you with us?
Yes.
Would you like to say anything?
No, I'm just happy to be on the board.
Boy, we appreciate you being here tonight. Motion's been made and seconded. I'll call the roll. Consular LeBlanc, yes. Consular McCarthy?
Yes.
Consular Memhard?
Yes, welcome aboard, Tim.
Thank you.
Consular Nolan?
Absolutely.
Consular O'Hara?
Yeah.
There you go, James. Thank you. Consular Pat?
From a 27-year member of the EDIC, I kept the seat warm for you. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Consular Cox?
Yes.
Consular Gilman?
Yes.
Consular... Consul Holmgren?
Yes, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next, Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appoint Laura Crook Waxell to the Gloucester Cultural Council, term to expire two, fourteen, twenty-three, and I so move.
Second.
Laura, how are you? Would you like to say anything?
I'm fine, thank you, and it's going to be an honor to serve all the cultural needs of Gloucester.
Thank you, we appreciate you. Any Consular questions? All right, I will call the roll call. Consul LeBlanc? Yes. Consul McCarthy?
Yes.
Consul Memhard?
Yes.
Consul Nolan?
Yes.
Consul O'Hara?
Yes.
Consul Pat?
Yes.
Consul Cox?
Yes.
Consul Gilman?
Yes.
Consul Holmgren?
Yes, thank you, Laura.
Thank you. The motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed, thank you, Laura. Next, we have, Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appoint Arlie Pepp to the Historic District Commission, and he is fulfilling an unexpired term, term to expire two, fourteen, twenty-two, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Arlie, would you like to say anything?
No, I think you've got it in your notes, and I'm looking forward to my return to the commission.
Same here, we appreciate you. Any Consular questions? All right, roll call, Consul LeBlanc, yes. Consul McCarthy?
Yes.
Consul Memhard?
If it comes to the toy soldier, yes.
Consul Nolan?
Yes, welcome back, Arlie.
Consul O'Hara?
Yes.
Consul Pat?
Yes, but I want to remind my brother that it is the historic district, not the hysterical district, because I live down here.
It's always good to have a couple of jobs, thank you. Consul Cox?
Yes, of course.
Consul Gilman?
Yes.
Consul Holmgren?
Yes, welcome back, Arlie, thank you.
Thank you, Consulars, thank you, Arlie, the motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appoint Nicole Rashaun Shawell to the Human Rights Commission, term to expire two, fourteen, twenty-one, and I so move.
Second.
Nicole, how are you, would you like to say anything?
I'm well, can you hear me okay, I'm on, right?
Yep, we got you.
Great, thank you, I'm grateful for the appointment, and I'm really looking forward to the work.
Great, thank you very much. Any Consular questions? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Consul LeBlanc, yes. Consul McCarthy?
Yes.
Consul Memhard?
Yes, thank you.
Consul Nolan?
Yes, thank you, Nicole.
Consul O'Hara?
Yes.
Consul Pat?
Yes, thank you, Nicole.
Consul Cox?
Yes, and happy birthday. Thanks.
Consul Gilman?
Yes.
Consul Holmgren?
Yes, thank you, Nikki.
Thank you, Consulars, thank you, Nicole, the motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Next, we have, Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appoint Peter Cannavale, from an alternate member to a full member, to the Zoni Board of Appeals, term to expire two, fourteen, twenty-three, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any Consular questions? Seeing none, Peter, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, good evening, guys, thanks for inviting me here, I'm very humbled and happy to be here. And you guys are doing a great job during this pandemic, really are. I don't see any other town doing as good as you guys, so I appreciate all your efforts, thank you.
Thank you, Peter, we're looking for great things out of you for the Z B A also. Motion's been made and seconded, I'll call the roll, Consul LeBlanc, yes. Consul McCarthy?
Yes.
Consul Memhard?
Yes, welcome, Peter.
Consul Nolan?
Yes, thank you, Peter.
Consul O'Hara?
Yes, thank you, Peter.
Consul Pat?
Thank you, Peter, yes.
Consul Cox?
Yes, welcome aboard.
Consul Gilman?
Yes.
Consul Holmgren?
Yes, thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Consulars.
Thank you, guys.
The motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, everybody, for joining these boards, commissions, and committees, we appreciate everything you do. Without your input, it would be tough to do what we have to do throughout the city, so keep up the good work and stay involved. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Are there any Consulars that would like to pull anything off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, thank you, Consulars. I will call the roll call, Consul LeBlanc, yes. Consul McCarthy?
Yes.
Consul Memhard?
Yes.
Consul Nolan?
Yes.
Consul O'Hara?
Yes.
Consul Pat?
Yes.
Consul Cox?
Yes.
Consul Gilman? Consul Gilman, you there?
Uh-oh.
She's frozen.
All right, Consul Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, so motion passes eight in favor, one...
Frozen.
One frozen, right. So I don't know how we go about that, I'm sure Val would vote to accept it, but we'll...
She froze on a good picture of her.
All right, so the next item, we have the unanimous consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to accept, well, actually, was there anybody that would like to pull anything off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to... There you go.
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded, I'll call the roll, Consul LeBlanc, yes. Consul McCarthy?
Yes.
Consul Memhard?
Yes.
Consul Nolan?
Yes.
Consul O'Hara? Jamie?
Hello.
There you go, got you. Yes, oh no?
Yes, yes, yes.
Consul Pat?
Yes.
Consul Cox?
Yes.
Consul Gilman? Nothing from Consul Gilman, Consul Holmgren?
Yes, one of the guesses from Jamie could be Val's, right?
One, well, one, motion passes eight in favor, one frozen. All right, Consulars, thank you very much, and before we call the next order of business, we did have an attendee that was, that got their hand up just after I closed the oral communications. So without objection, could we possibly listen to that one participant before we, they've had their hand up? Everybody all signed that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great.
Yes.
All right, so I am going to allow this person to talk. Okay, so you are able to talk for oral communications, can you state your name and address?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
My name is Lois Hamilton, I live at forty-six Grove Street, I'm seventy-five years old, and I've lived here for forty-nine years. I've had two knee replacements. And my concern is the condition of my street and sidewalks. As a senior citizen, I find it very difficult to go out and take a walk and not be afraid of falling. And also, it's very, very dangerous. And for three years, they've said, told me that next year, that they'll pave the street and, and again, do the sidewalks. And it comes, and then they tell me again, it's going to be the following year. And I guess that's it. Thank you very much, I appreciate if the Council could help out on this issue. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hamilton, and thank you for being patient and following along with our meeting until we got back to you, we appreciate it.
Yes, it was a good experience, thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you.
Okay, thank you, bye.
All right, so the unanimous consent agenda, the consent agenda has been approved. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of May seventh.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Consul Cox?
Hello, everybody, I have a Budget and Finance Consent Agenda. Would anybody like to remove anything from this agenda?
Perfect.
Wow, not exactly what I expected, okay, that's right.
Consul Cox, through the chair, come...
Yes, join.
Consul Gilman is not on, she's not at the, at the meeting anymore. I, I thought she might call in, but I don't see her. Oh, wait a minute, she has called in, hold on, let me allow, let me move her to a panelist.
I am fine with removing the one item that she wanted to remove for further discussion.
I'm on, I'm on the phone now, can you hear me?
Okay.
All right, Melissa, why don't you, so we're at the Be Enough Unanimous Consent Agenda Val.
So about, is there anybody that would like to...
I heard you. So I would like to remove the...
The C P C?
C P A, yeah, C P C. For one hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, I move the rest of the agenda? Second.
Second.
They moved and seconded. Consul Cox?
You want to do a roll call vote on the ones that we moved and seconded?
Do you want me to do it for you?
Oh, I can, yeah, I can roll call it, that's fine. Actually, I can't, because I don't have the list.
I'll call it, okay. So do you want to have Consul Gilman talk about why...
No, I want to, I want to pass what we have, and then we'll circle back to the other one.
All right, Consul LeBlanc, yes. Consul McCarthy?
Yes.
Consul Memhard?
Yes.
Consul Nolan?
Yes.
Consul O'Hara?
Yeah.
Consul Pat?
Yes.
Consul Cox?
Yes.
Consul Gilman?
Yes.
Consul Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, motion, motion to accept the unanimous consent agenda, as is, is nine to zero, nine in favor, zero opposed. Consul Cox?
The other item that Consul Gilman pulled was the off-cycle funding for the purpose of tenant-based rental and mortgage assistance program for a hundred thousand dollars. I guess, Consul Gilman, do you have any specific questions or concerns about it?
Well, yes, I just wanted to discuss the public hearing decision a little bit more in detail. I've watched the Zoom presentation, I read the minutes, and the issue that I wanted to bring up to Council for consideration is if we, if per Section two dash eleven procedures in the city charter, Section E, we have to publish once in full and not less than seven days following the publication, we'll hold a public hearing. So if we were to put this in the Gloucester Daily on Friday, we would have seven days before our next city council meeting. So in the minutes, it kept talking about not being able to bring this up again until the second week and, second meeting in June, which would be June ninth. And I would agree that that is a long time away. However, if we, if we did this expeditiously, we would be able to maintain our current protocol to practice of having public hearings for things that come, matters that come before us that are C P A oriented, because we've always allowed the taxpayers to participate in the public hearing. So I guess I was, I wanted to just discuss that, and I'll throw it out for a motion, and I'll just, I'll see if I have any backers. So I would just like to move that we, that we have a public hearing on this matter no later than May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty.
I'll second for discussion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded for discussion.
So, once again, I just, I just feel that, you know, I totally understand that we're in a pandemic, and this is, this is an issue that is urgent. And I agree that if this had, if we would have to have waited until June ninth, that that is too long based on the urgent need. But seeing that we could make this happen in two weeks, I feel like it's consistent with our past practices, and people that perhaps weren't aware that this was coming up or want to participate would be able to, to participate remotely at our next meeting. And therefore, we would stick with our current protocol. And I just would ask Consulars to consider joining me on this. We need majority, and so I appreciate Consul Cox seconding me, thank you.
Consul Pat?
Yes, I understand what Consul Gilman is saying, and I very much appreciate that, and also that she was able to see that it could be, you know, put in for two weeks later. But I also did read our communications that we received. And there are, from what I can understand, there are people that are in the immediate need today, yesterday, or whatever. And my feeling would be understanding that it's not the normal protocol, this is not normal times, and I would not support putting this off for another two weeks. I would like to vote on it today.
Thank you, Consul Pat, Consul Holmgren?
I agree with Consul Pat, I appreciate the chance to discuss this matter. We have the chance to act fast, to help a huge group of people. Normally, government does not act fast, and that is by design, and I do appreciate that. But in this particular case, this money would just sit there. If we didn't act on it now, then it would just be sitting there for another two weeks. And at the risk of assuming, we would probably act on it then, so why not vote on it tonight and get it moving?
Thank you, Jen, Consul McCarthy?
I agree with Consul Holmgren and Pat, we're in a state of emergency right now. People are unemployed, people have no way to pay their rent. There's a trickle-down effect to that, to landlords, and then to banks. There's a lot of people that own two-family homes that depend on the rent coming in. I think we're handing this off to an agency that is well-schooled in helping people. There are a lot of criteria, if you read the packet, they, they have budget counseling that goes along with this. And I agree that we should not wait two weeks, like Consul Holmgren said, that big government does. I think we ought to vote it forward tonight. And also, I've seen the participant list, Mr. President, that we have Peggy Steck and Jen Beal from Action there, if you wanted to get their input.
And Catherine Schlichte.
Yeah, Catherine's there too, I'll wait for, see if anybody, I don't want to put anybody in this club, but if anybody has any questions for any of them, you can feel free to ask. Consul Memhard?
I just wanted to follow up, I agree we should proceed now. I think that the C, the Community Preservation Committee has done their homework, they've worked with Action, they're both well-vetted. Catherine Schlichte and the Action folks gave a clear presentation at our Budget and Finance Committee, and I think we should proceed with this now, thank you.
Thank you, Consulars, is there anybody else?
Yes.
Consul Cox?
Well, if everybody, if all the other Consulars have spoken, I, I'll follow it up with the motion, I just, if there's anybody else.
I'll say something, I'm in favor of voting tonight. I think all the Consulars are well-aware of what the charter says. Thank you, Consul Gilman, for an update, but I think we're pretty well-versed in our charter, seeing that we do this every weekend, every week, but I am a hundred percent in favor of voting this tonight. I think there's people out there that need this money now, and waiting any longer would be kind of a slap in the face to our community. So I'm going to vote for this tonight. Consul Cox?
Thank you. I just want to say that before we even opened the Budget and Finance meeting, I had worked with the Clerk's Office and to discuss our options for the public hearing. And we, we spoke with Consul Payson as well. And while it's clear that this is a procedure for the City Council to waive the public hearing, I've said in the past that I'm not a fan of doing off-cycle C P C awards anyway. I like to have them bundled with the whole package and doing it that way. This is completely uncharted territory. I am not a fan of skipping steps. This, this could be a lifesaver to someone. This is, the times that we're in right now are so stressful, and two weeks could be a... a lifesaver in the, in the form of, you know, if, if I can't provide for my family, what is my worth? And it, I mean, it could, I know it's, I'm, it's on the drastic end of it, but this could be a suicide. This could be a, somebody completely worried about failing their family. Two weeks could be very life-saving. Um, so we've talked with the professionals with Action and also with the committee and I really feel like they are capable of handling the distribution of this. This is not the first time we've distributed money in this form from this category to this nonprofit to handle. So I have the utmost faith in everybody and in our process. Quite frankly, even when we have the public hearings for CPC staff, there's, there tends to be no objection. I have to say that the YMCA public hearing last round had objections and, you know, I was, I was not surprised with that one. But typically, we don't get anybody to speak in opposition of any of these things if we get people to come to meetings at all anyway. So I, I will personally take all the heat from not having a public hearing if it's so.
I'm happy to share the heat with you, counselor.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all on this together, so.
I think we are doing the right thing. I do appreciate Counselor Gilman's input and trust me, I was hesitant as well until we really talked it through prior to the Budget and Finance meeting. And I asked my committee twice if they understood what everything was going through, not having the public hearing, and I just wanted to make sure that they were okay with it and they supported it 100%.
Great, thank you, Counselor.
All right, that being said, I'm happy that this was not the longest motion that you could have pulled, so I'm grateful for that. Budget and Finance voted unanimously that the City Council approve up to $100,000 from the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide off-cycle funding for the purpose of the Action Incorporated Tenant-Based Rental Mortgage Assistant Program. The appropriation will be allocated to the community housing category and will be funded up to $100,000 from the Community Housing Reserve Fund 4350. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund Housing, Community Housing Projects Fund 4904 and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? I see our mayor has her hand up. Mayor, would you like to say something?
Yes, um, it's not all the time that you're going to see me, um, agreeing with Counselor Cox. I was on that Budget and Finance also. We've been getting quite a few emails because during the COVID, a lot of people aren't allowed to be, um, evicted, but doesn't mean that eventually they don't pay their rent. And so you have landlords who are suffering tremendously because they still have to pay their taxes and water and they're not evicting anyone, but they're not having any income that's coming in either. So it's a win-win. A lot of people do need to change apartments and they do need some assistance and Action has helped through the whole thing. You know, through the action energy. So it's not a company we're not familiar with. I know that a lot of people don't like having public hearings, but this right now, as she said, is detrimental to the state being of a lot of people and including landlords. And the fact is that, um, it's not a company we don't know. Action, um, we trust them with our homeless. We trust them with our fuel. We trust them with a lot of other programs that they do. It's a phenomenal program that works closely. And they were working really closely with, um, HUD, they received HUD, so it's not something that they don't know how to handle. It's not a new company that here we're going to give you some money. Um, it's a well-known action since 1970s and it's done this before and I am so glad that you are putting this through. And like you said, it's not every day I'm going to agree with her. Meeting, you know, you have Budget and Finance Chair, Counselor Cox, but this really is very important that it does go through because there are residents as we speak who are waiting for this to go through and so they can actually pay their rents, landlords, but also be able to move, you know, they're stuck in a little apartment because they didn't have first, a last or assistance. So thank you so much.
And this is a drop in the bucket of what we, you know, need in the city. And I'm grateful for the $100,000 being put forward, but that money is going to go fast.
Very great. Thank you, Counselor Cox. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, is there any other Counselor discussion? All right, Counselor O'Hara?
Thank you. I just want to thank Counselor Cox. She used a very powerful word, but it's very truthful. Life was good two months ago, as we all know, and then, then, uh, the coronavirus, COVID-19 struck and.
We lost you. We lost you, Jamie.
Okay.
There you go. Yeah, I got you.
Thank you. I just want to tell whatever we can do to help people get through this. Hopefully get people back on their feet and get this economy going again, but I will be supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, anybody else? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Does everybody understand what we're voting for? I will call the roll call. Counselor, yes?
Technicality, um, we should have voted on Counselors, Counselor Gilman's, um, motion to have a public hearing prior to me reading my motion. So.
Okay. No, I'm glad you caught it. Um, so Counselor Gilman had a motion on the floor and we do, um, request a public hearing. So I'll call a roll call vote.
Unless she wants to withdraw it.
Why don't we just keep going?
Okay.
Counsel, to, for motion to accept a public hearing, Counselor LeBlanc? No? Counselor McCarthy?
No.
Counselor Memhard?
No.
Counselor Nolan?
No.
Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Counselor Pat?
No.
Counselor Cox?
No.
Counselor Gilman? Counselor Gilman? Valley there? Uh, Counselor Holmgren?
Hello?
Oh, there you go. Yep.
I'm here. Can you hear me? Because I keep hitting, hitting star nine.
I can, I can hear you now. So this is a motion to, to, for a public hearing.
I've been hearing you. Um, I wanted to withdraw my motion, so, um, I was, I was, I didn't know that you could hear me. I kept hitting star nine. So I would like to withdraw this roll call motion that you've just ended before we tally. Um, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk through this. So motion to withdraw.
Second.
All right, so now we have to go through this whole thing again to the roll call vote. So we will, all righty, so motion to.
I'm having technical issues. I'm sorry. I can't get, get on.
Counselor LeBlanc, so motion to withdraw, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Sounds good to me, yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yeah.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, motion to accept the public hearing fails. Back to the original motion, Counselor Cox. Does everybody understand what we're voting on? All righty, I will call the roll. Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Absolutely.
Counselor Gilman?
Yeah.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
The motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Motion to reconsider.
Do we have a, we have a motion to reconsider? Do we have a?
Second.
Second.
The movement seconded. All right, does everybody understand the motion to reconsider? All right, Counselor LeBlanc, no. Counselor McCarthy?
No.
Counselor Memhard?
No.
Counselor Nolan?
No.
Counselor O'Hara?
Oh.
Counselor Pat?
No.
Counselor Cox?
No.
Counselor Gilman?
No.
Counselor Holmgren?
No.
Good. Motion to reconsider, uh, fails, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Counselor Cox. Continue with the Budget and Finance.
Oh, that's it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business.
The next order of business is the Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee Report of May 4th.
Thank you. Uh, this is for Chief Smith. Chief Smith, are you with us this evening?
I am.
There you go. All righty, so I, I will call the motion. Ordinance and Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council amend Chapter 12, oh, I'm sorry. Let me start this over. Um, Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve the negotiated contract between the City of Gloucester and Fire Chief Eric Smith for the term of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2025, under the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Section 8-18, subsection D, and I so move.
Second.
The movement seconded. Um, Chief Smith, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to everybody for all the support. It's been, I can't believe it's been almost eight years already and it seems like we've been through many different trials and tribulations during those eight years. And during this pandemic, the, the entire team's been great. So it's, uh, it's, it's outstanding to be a part of a team like this and, and the mayor's done an awesome job with it. Um, I can't say enough positive things about how we've moved it forward. I look at what other communities are doing and how they're struggling. You know, with just normal day-to-day things prior to this pandemic, then you layer this pandemic on top of it and, uh, we're kind of the shining star and it's, it's good to be part of a team like that.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, do we have any questions for Chief? Any comments before we vote? Counselor O'Hara?
Thank you. I just want to thank the Chief. Um, I was on the Fire Chief Selection Committee a plus years ago that put his name, Mayor Kerr. I want to thank him for, for, um, putting his name forward. He moved from, I don't know what state that was, from the Upper Peninsula.
Michigan.
Michigan.
He really doesn't look like he's aged too much in eight years, so, um, the, I don't want to think that's been a easy ride, but I want to thank him and his department for everything they do on a daily basis, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, protecting, um, every citizen in Gloucester and Cape Ann. Thank you very much. Looking forward to working with you for another term.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jamie. Anybody else? Counselor Pat?
Yes, um, Chief, I just wanted to thank you so much for, um, coming here, uh, to join us in Gloucester and I want to thank the entire department for all their work, um, not only every single day, but especially here during this pandemic. Uh, and as you've mentioned, um, we are a shining star within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There's 351 communities and many of them, uh, many people from many communities have said how great Gloucester is doing. So thank you. Thank you to the mayor for her leadership and thank you for, uh, the entire department for all your work.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Anybody else? Uh, Counselor McCarthy?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Chief Smith for his service, having worked with him for the last eight years. Uh, he's been a great addition to the city. You could tell he was, uh, brought up by a police officer, his father.
Absolutely.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? All right, Counselor Holmgren?
Thank you, Chief. I know, uh, I, Counselor LeBlanc allowed me to say a few words at ONA, but I just want to reiterate, I'm very happy to, uh, vote for your reappointment and thank you very, very much for all you've done.
Thanks, Jen.
All right, Counselor Cox?
Thank you, Chief. Um, I look forward to this being the final time that I get to appoint you. Good luck and I will see you in 2025.
All right.
All right, great, everyone. So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. I will call the roll call. Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Absolutely.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yeah.
There you go. Counselor Pat? Barry froze.
Uh-oh.
We'll get back to Barry. Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yeah.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
All righty, and I'm sure Barry was a yes, but I can't mark it down as a legit without a, without an actual vote, so, uh, Chief Eric Smith has passed on eight in favor, one frozen. Does that, are we going to make that a new term or?
I think we need a new category for that.
We need a new category. All right, I'm sure, I'm sure Barry, um, said yes, but for the record, we won't, we won't be able to log in.
There he is. He's back.
So Barry, um, yes or no on the chief?
Yes.
All right. Great, thank you. So you, unanimously for the Chief Eric Smith's reappointment, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Chief. Keep up the good work and, uh, I think this is going to be my last appointment for you also. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks, boy.
It will be my last appointment because I'm not going to be around.
Everybody's going to be around though, so that's good.
I'm just going to come to City Hall when you get reappointed and just harass you in 2025.
Yeah, 2025, I don't know, they might throw me out by then. I'll be getting old.
Yeah, right.
You might actually age by then?
Yeah, yeah. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good one.
All right, so the next order of business is, um, Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend the City Council to amend Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 2, Division 2, Traffic Commission, Section 22-32, Composition, Appointment, Terms, Members, by striking the phrase, eight members, compromise of a, members, compromise of a member of the Fire Department, Police Department and Public Works and four resident members who shall be at large. These members, um, shall, I didn't hear you. Appointments shall be with terms of three years in case the resignation, death, or disqualification of any member of Composition or Commission for the purpose of filling a vacancy and for any other reason, an appointment for unexpected term shall be immediately made by the mayor. And I so move.
Second.
All right, so I just want to brief everybody. So this has gone to ONA and Council a couple of times and Jen, Counselor Holmgren, had recommended go back to Council because we had needed the clarification on whether these bodies, with these members of the Police, Fire and DPW are going to be ex officios of voting members. So we had this discussion at ONA the other day. They will be voting members and there will be four members of the community at large. So it'll make it seven members total, which will all be voting members. So does everybody understand that? All right, great. Um, are there any Counselor questions? Seeing none, I will call for the roll. Uh, Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes, thank you for their work on this.
Thank you, guys. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes, a much, much improved, uh, Traffic Commission setup. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Counselor Cox?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Holmgren, for kicking it back and getting that right. I appreciate it.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes, thanks, Jen.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes, and, and thanks, everybody, and thank you, Counselor LeBlanc, uh, for, for hammering this out.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So the motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Um, let's see here. Next, we have, uh, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please. Oh, I'm sorry, we have, yeah, we have one more, one more item out of ONA. Uh, so we have a committee recommendation. And before I read the motion, Counselor Holmgren, would you like to chime in on this?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, if, if you all don't mind, um, move to continue this, uh, to the next City Council meeting. I want a little more guidance from the state, uh, before we vote on this.
Thank you. Uh, and just to bring everybody up, what this, what this is for is this is for, um, for city council discussion on the mail-in votes for the primary and for the general election. Counselor Holmgren's just going to reach out to some state people to find out, get a clarification on what, where we stand, or where the state stands before we move forward with this.
Council President, if I may, I have some information regarding that. On this Thursday, the Election Laws Committee will hold a public hearing. It's going to be via Zoom, Facebook Live, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., and there are seven bills that they're going to be taking up regarding elections, mailing, early voting. So there are seven bills on this election committee that will be taken up this Thursday, the 14th, at 1:00 p.m., and I can send you that information.
Great. Thank you, Joanne. I appreciate it. So Counselor, would you like to continue this out?
Yes, please, and it sounds like we're going to have a lot more information after Thursday. Thank you, Joanne.
Great, awesome. So I will continue this for the May 26th meeting. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Planning and Development Standing Committee report of May 6th.
Counselor Gilman?
I have no matters to report.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2020-016, Loan Authorization 2020-005, Loan Authorization Requesting the Amount of $1,600,000 for Security Upgrades at Gloucester High School and the O'Malley Innovation Middle School.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will open the public hearing and ask if there was anybody that would like to speak in favor.
Good evening, Counselors.
Counselor Don, thank you.
Oh, this is Mike Hale right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. How you doing, Mike?
Good, how are you?
Sorry about that. I saw John, I saw John come up on the screen as you started talking.
He may chime in as well. So, thank you very much, Counselors. This is, again, as I'm just read to you, a loan authorization request of $1,600,000 for improved security upgrades to the O'Malley Innovation, O'Malley Innovation Middle School and Gloucester High School. As you're aware, neither school was designed at a time when school security was held in the same regard as it is in 2020.
They have an extended call.
No, I muted Val, sorry about that. Okay.
We've made numerous improvements over the years. None of them tie together as well as they probably should, and this product will do just that. If we're successful this evening, we'll engage with an architectural firm, and in collaboration with Gloucester Public Schools, the Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works, will develop a plan that will be able to execute for the summer of 2021. That's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Mr. Dunn?
Just wanted to say, one of the reasons it's coming before you now, even though the work is not going to be done until the summer of 2021, is that there is some lead time on the components of what we're going to be doing. So we do need to kind of move that along in order to be able to, you know, do the installation a year and two months from now.
Thank you, John. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? We have a, Chairman Pope, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jonathan Pope, and I live at 16 Marble Street in Gloucester. And I would just like to support this loan authorization. As Mike said, the O'Malley Innovation Middle School was designed in the 1960s, as and the Gloucester High School was renovated, and the entryway there was designed in the 90s. And as we all know, life has changed greatly, and circumstances have changed greatly, and anything that we can do to make our children more secure in schools, I would wholeheartedly support. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Pope. We do have another hand raised. It's been up for a little bit. I'm going to see, let them chime in to see what hello caller, hello caller, are you there?
Eve, it's Val's number.
Oh, okay.
She keeps on putting her hand up, so.
Okay, Val. Val, are you there? All right, well, this is in favor. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition?
Where is your, where's your face?
Seeing none. Actually, well, is there any communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Oh, we have any counselor questions? Any counselor questions? Seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing and call for the committee report, please.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the following loan authorization. Ordered that the City of Gloucester appropriates $1,600,000 to pay costs of security upgrades at Gloucester High School and O'Malley Innovation Middle School, including costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Master General Law Chapter 44, Section 7, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The mayor and any other appropriate official of the city are authorized to apply for, accept, expand any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay the cost of the project. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, and the general laws thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Further ordered that the treasurer is authorized.
How do you smell? You smell good?
Yes. Can you mute Chairman Pope, please?
I just did.
Thank you. Apparently, I want to go over there for dinner.
Further ordered.
Further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the general laws, any or all of the bonds authorized by this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes, and I so move.
Second.
Alrighty, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
No.
Alrighty, I will call the roll call. Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes, if we have dinner.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yeah.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, counselors. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2020-014 to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-271, Parking prohibited from May 1st to September 15th, Section 22-274, Same at all times, and Section 22-270, Parking prohibited at all times regarding Rocky Neck Avenue and Horton Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Cox?
I am tempted to pull this all together through numerous frustrations over the last two weeks, but if Counselor Memhard is interested in trying it for another two weeks with not having any sort of ability to walk people through this area and not getting a good response when I do show up for two hours, I ask to continue it or pull it. Scott, what do you think?
After going through Williams Court with all of you, it's just really important, clearly for all of us, that we have this public input process. And right now, this is not a good time for what Counselor Cox very well-intentionedly has tried to help the neighborhood, but it's not viewed that way without more public input. So I would ask that we withdraw it for the present time.
Okay. One of the things, when I was down there on Saturday, is there's clear violation of the seasonal parking restriction in the area that it either be enforced or that we are able to move forward with something like this during these times. I was trying to remove that seasonal restriction prior to May 1st, and apparently I'm trying to sneak something through, unfortunately. So on a daily basis, there are 10 cars in violation down there, and no one's, no one's getting ticketed, which is fine, but that was my intention to have this done prior to May 1st. So, thank you for your support on that, Scott, and I move to withdraw.
Thank you.
We have a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will call the roll. Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman? Val, are you there? All right, Counselor, yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Counselor Holmgren?
Did you get it?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Motion to withdraw passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, counselors. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2020-010, Special City Council Permit 2020-002, Essex Avenue, Number 99A, Map 216, Lot 126, Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 3.1.6B, Building heights in excess of 35 feet, Section 2.3.4, Sub-phrase 13, Marine-related storage or repair limited primarily in the MI District to the commercial fishing vessels, Section 5.5, Lonely requirements, Section 5.5.2, and Section 5.5.3 in the EB District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Pursuant to Section 17 of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, in an abundance of caution, the city council, through its president, has rescheduled all public hearings and decision deadlines on permit applications until after the current state of emergency has concluded in Massachusetts. At that time, this permit application will be scheduled for a public hearing, and will be acted on within the time limits required by law. So that being said, we're going to continue this out. Joanne, should we, should we pick a date, or does it? Or can we just, can we continue this without a date? I think we need to pick a date. So why don't we continue this out to our first meeting in June, which is June 9th? Just to bring it back, if things change by then. So I'm going to open the public hearing and continue this till, actually, I'm sorry, is that June 9th, Joanne, our first council meeting? Yes. Joanne, are you there?
Yes, it is. It's June 9th.
All right, so I'll open it and continue it to June 9th. Thank you, counselors. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is update on the Housing Protection Planning Committee and the Ad Hoc Committee to Research Assisted Living Facilities by City Council Representative Counselor Jen Hoagren.
Counselor Holmgren, do you have anything for us?
No updates at this time. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next order of business.
Next order of business is Counselor's request to the mayor.
So I will start what I see up in my, on my screen. So Counsel McCarthy?
None.
Counselor Memhard?
I'd like to request the mayor work with our conservation agent to get signage on Good Harbor Beach, alerting the general public to the presence of nesting shorebirds, which are protected under state and federal law. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holmgren?
I have no request. Thank you all for being supreme human beings, and I can't say enough about all the wonderful people in this city. I mean, we are really, we're kicking butt right now, so thank you, every single one of you.
Thank you, Jen. So want you, keep up the good work. Counselor Cox?
Sorry about that. Counselor Memhard and Counselor Karntke, I just forwarded you an email from, we're doing, there's a Zoom meeting tomorrow from 3:00 to 4:15 that is budgeting in the time of COVID. Sounds like a risque novel, but I wanted to share that with everybody. It's being put on by Framingham Chief Operating Officer Thatcher Kaiser III. So if anybody else would like that information, if you want to join another Zoom meeting, I'm more than happy to email that out to everybody. So I think it might be interesting, and seeing that we're coming up on our first budget meeting, it is definitely timely.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Counselor Pat?
Nothing at the moment. Thank you. Thank you to everybody for working through this crisis. And again, kudos to all the team. When I say all the team, not only the administration and our first responders, GPW, the schools, everyone, and the citizens of the community. Thank you for standing out above most of the rest in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Thank you, Barry. Counselor O'Hara?
Yeah, there you go. There we go. Want to thank the 29 people who rolled up their sleeves yesterday at the Magnolia Library and donated a pint of blood. That was tremendous. That helped save a lot, up to 90 people. So hats off to everyone who participated, and we'll be having another blood drive at the Magnolia Library in approximately two weeks. So you can call 1-800-RED-CROSS to make an appointment. Thank you very much, and thanks to everyone out there who's helping everyone in need to get through this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. I'll be there for that blood drive. Appreciate it. Counselor Nolan? Johnny, there?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I got you. Anything?
There you are. I have nothing tonight besides just telling everybody to keep their chins up, stay safe, and keep working together. Everybody's doing a great job.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gilman?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank the council for being patient tonight with my technology. It ended up being our server went down, and that's why I had plugged in my phone number early on, so I was able to at least call in. But I appreciate it. I appreciate the conversation that we tried to have with the public hearing, and I really listened to all of you, and that's part of working together. So thank you all for everything that you've done and for being patient with my technology tonight. So be well. Thank you.
You're muted, Steve.
There you go. Last but not least, myself. I just want to echo everybody else's sentiments tonight. Everybody's doing a great job. The city's really kicking butt. We appreciate this. Hopefully, we'll be reopening the city in phases over the next few weeks. Mayor has asked requests for how to open this up. We have a great team that's been put together over the past few days that is going to help us open up and open up correctly. And that being said, we're looking forward to try to get.
Counselor McCarthy?
I called him first.
Oh.
John was first. All right, well, that's it. That being said, everybody's doing a great job. Keep it up, and we'll see you on the other side. I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and we're going to do a roll call.
So moved.
Moving and seconded. All right, Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
I'd like to see you all before we go to the other side, but yes.
I hear you. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara? Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yeah.
Counselor Holmberg?
Yes.
Alright, the meeting is adjourned. Great job, everyone. Enjoy your night.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.